My pleasure to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Everyone here is upon him, he's, his crew got put on standby, so he can be here tonight. Everyone had a chance to look over the agenda for tonight?
Yep.
Any discussion, anything you need to add?
Confirming.
Good, okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jordan, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes, motion carried. Okay, let's move on to the May fourteenth meeting minutes. Everybody had a chance to look that over? Anything look good, changes need to be made? Nope. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the May fourteenth meeting minutes. Is there a second? Seconded by Dave, any further discussion? All those in favor? Kinda. Foes, motion carried. And at this time, I will open it up to public comment on agenda items only. Okay, go ahead and close public comment. Zoning update, Dave Kelsey.
Okay, uh, there were no permits this month, violation Brian Helms on seventy-one oh six Cubler. The contractor should be working on it, I was hoping to get over there today, but I talked to him and the courts made it where he could proceed with the cleanup, he said he's gonna have the police with him or just for his own protection, I guess. He's gonna get all the debris, the little stuff cleaned up first and then come back on the second process and I believe hold mobile home and votes off the property. I don't know if the guy's still in there or not, but.
We're pretty sure he's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to him today.
Okay, on uh, uh, let me see, okay, on one-one-five-eight-nine, Juniper. Uh, there's a, yeah, we have a court date this Friday. And uh, we went to court once already and um, and the magistrate gave him an extra thirty days to clean it up because he, he argued a little bit saying that he, oh, you know, it's his property, do anything he wants, but that doesn't flush. And Himlock, like, till seven-seven at twenty-five to clean up and he's got that cleaned up. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, court update from Dave?
Randy, give me the list, just home occupation, like, residential. Tent requirement. Especially used for commercial use. Minimum house square footage in a commercial district.
Okay, well, tonight we're gonna focus on, if we get to that, if we got time, we will, but the focus for tonight's is in the short-term rentals. And we have a speaker here too. Okay? Dave? Nope, Randy Mau, is it, is it Mau?
Yes.
Yep, Randy Mau has requested to speak at today's meeting. He has the property on, there's Fitzner, Fitzner. He has the property on Fitzner Road, wanted to run a few ideas by us on what he wants to do to the property and he's gonna talk to us and if you have any questions, now's the time to ask him.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm Randy Mau, and I'm in Grand Rapids area. And I've got some pictures, I got a drawing that I had drawn originally, I just added a few things to it and blew it up and what I wanna do is, I get some kind of indication as to what I can do, then go ahead and have an engineer draw everything up. I think it's cool, there's there. And I've got some pictures of some homes. I've got pictures here, some ideas of some tiny homes as well as barns and mediums. Pretty cool looking, thank you. A lot of pictures there, are you casing?
Yeah, I can.
And you wanna do it?
You probably got another one for her.
What I would like to propose is doing a P and D, uh, what, I'm twenty-eight acres. More, a little more than twenty-eight acres. And a P and D is that you would be doing about half in, in, in areas that are, uh, wooded, there'd be paths around it, I wanna dig that, wanna dig a little pond in there for the community area. The road is about an acre and a half and the green space is about thirteen acres and that's what they properly require. We'd like to do single-family tiny homes as well as prop, like a duplex, some kind of a, yeah, double multi-family as duplexes. And then, like I said, a path around the entire project. And then your lots, we're doing half-acre lots with a, with a private road. I'd like to stick to a private road and have, have the community take care of the road instead of a county road. Now, I don't know if that would be a requirement with a P and D, if, you know, if we can get by with a private road or a county road here. I guess you guys would know that answer. I haven't had, I haven't talked with the, the city or the road commission, but typically we, you could do a private road and a subdivision or a P and D. It would be underground utilities, paved road, built county specs. There'd be twenty-four hundred feet of road in this development and a width of twenty-two foot, and that apply, that complies with the township. And the zoning. The cul-de-sacs would be, probably an eighty-foot radius for the utility or fire, ambulance, that type of thing. We'd have to do some kind of a storm system through the project and drain into the lake or pond, whatever you wanna call it. But we'd have to do some kind of a storm drainage under the roads to get all our drainage to the pond. I would think that maybe streetlights also, we'd have to use streetlights on the project. Oh, there's some exceptions here on this drawing. I'd like to acquire this, this exception to the, to the west of the project for a little additional green space 'cause that would tie in nicely with the lake that we've got, that you see with the broken lines there, you see the lake and what I'd like to do is extend that lake into the exception areas, most of it's wetlands and lowland anyway. And then there's, I wanna design a little island and then the people with the lots on the lake, they could probably have docks and little paddle boats or whatever, kinda cool. Off Fitzner, I was thinking back on lot twenty-seven, if you look at twenty-seven, I was thinking that I'd like to acquire a little piece of land there that we can have an in and out on Fitzner Road. Off twenty-seven and then tie into that cul-de-sac, that would eliminate the cul-de-sac here. So tying in, tying in the street there.
Is it off twenty-seven?
It'd be off Fitzner.
Yeah.
Yeah, off Fitzner, you had a lot. And this was an afterthought, after I hit on this drawing, but I thought that would be a, a better avenue for the fire engines and emergency vehicles and also construction, for construction equipment to enter off Fitzner, which would be a gravel road, wouldn't be as dangerous as entering off the highway forty-six, so, 'cause that would be a tough deal there with people coming in and out there all the time. There's a lot of traffic on that road. The homes would range in size from five hundred to six hundred and sixty square feet is what I propose. That would be considered a tiny home. And then with the, with the duplexes, however we wanna do it, would be twice that, obviously, with a square foot. I'm not thinking basements, I'm thinking on slabs. A dogmanium is like a fire structure and there'd be heat in the floors, reheat in the floors. And then I've got these plans that I gave you guys, the drawings, that kinda shows you some ideas of what I'd like to do and those are my favorites, some of those ones that you see there. I also talked with a gal in Douglas Township and there's two drawings in here. And she's got a little over five hundred square foot, you see in the back, one of your back copies there, one of your back drawings. And this is the drawing right here. This is the drawing here. And then you've got a drawing that shows the inside, a smaller drawing that shows the bathroom area and the living area along with the smaller print of the house in the front. That's already in existence, it's been accepted in Douglas Township. So, and it's the minimum of five hundred square foot, which is a minimum in Douglas Township. And that's off, um, Tan, or not Tanisville Road, um, oh gosh. It's off, um, Tan, the Tanor Road? I'm sorry? Oh, is it McBride? Yeah, McBride Road, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for, questions they'd like to, is there answers?
No natural gas, I'll do that.
No, no natural gas, the LP, what we, was we, we bury tanks, the tanks with the vent and everything out there. That's what it would be.
Well, then coming off.
Be septic, well, obviously.
To try to get this road, you either gotta come off Tiffany's or else off Johnson's property there, is what you're thinking?
Yeah. I'd like to get an easement through there, I don't know, Joe, I don't know who owns that parcel. I'd like to find out, I think it'd be a big added plus for this development, is to have that extra entrance and exit there. But I think that would really add to the project. So, yeah, the LP, well, septic. I talked with the health department and they're, they think that with a lot of work going out there and doing up these bore rings and have to lay out the streets, I have to do a lot of clearing for them to get in here, but once that's done, they would come in and, once the frontage is laid out, I'm thinking a hundred thirty-five foot of frontage in each one of these lots, being a half acre, and then we'd have to locate the septic and the well on each project, on each lot. So, there's quite a bit of work that would have to be done with that. And I think the setbacks, forty feet per home on the development.
Any other questions?
This basically is approved engineering.
Yeah.
I just wanna present this and then if we, if I get some favor towards it, then I would have an engineer drawing, I mean, that's obvious, I mean, that's something that has to be done with the engineering and uh, so on and so forth, so. I don't have any questions.
Jake?
No.
Well, I guess, what kind of timeframe would you be looking to do something like this? I know you were here before.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get started on the road, do some clearing in there, get the approval from the health department for the septics, that's a big, that's a big issue. As far as building the road, we build our own roads. I'm thinking probably, it, it won't probably be till spring before I actually break ground in a house, is what I'm thinking. Then with the economy, it's not all that great, I'd like to see the interest rates come down a little bit, so on and so forth, but so I'm thinking probably next spring.
Now, are these like, the houses that you've shown us here, is that gonna be like, you're gonna have somebody that comes in and say, purchases lot five and then you give them a book, say, okay, you choose from these houses or do they, can they come in with their own designs?
Yeah, they can come in with their own designs, but I usually like to just build the spec house and sell it. If somebody wants to buy a lot and I would like to be able to develop the whole thing, have control, I'd have a lot better control if I did everything with the development and built the home. They like it, they buy it, give me warranties, I think that's.
So it'd be more likely that you'd build the homes and sell them?
Yeah, yeah, we build all the homes, I think, yeah.
You build it on site?
Yeah. Maybe a stick-built home.
Okay, that's my question. I've seen some of these where they're on wheels and people.
Yeah, right, no, I don't want that. They'll be able to gain a lot more equity in a tiny home, built tiny home, custom home, as opposed like a trailer on wheels or whatever you wanna say.
Yeah, what would be like the average cost of one of these homes?
Well, the lot in the home, we're looking about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar package to maybe a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar package. And I've been informed that the banks, I've been talking with a banker, they would like to do the whole project. But they say if you keep the, if you keep it down below a hundred and ninety-five thousand, they shouldn't move.
So is there quite a bit of demand right now for these homes?
Oh, yeah, there is, any township around the whole Greater Grand Rapids area, there's nothing available. I think Marcy could probably resulture that. But the market is slow right now, obviously. But I think that if we can get the interest rates down and I think probably a year after the, uh, year into Trump's administration, I think that it's gonna, it's gonna come back. It's just slow right now. I did think about going in there and building a spec house, get the road up to standards and then start the spec house, trying to maybe get one in this year, but I don't know, it's, it's doubtful, I go to Florida for the winter for six months and I don't know if I wanna be trying to control the development, so.
Where's the closest, will be the closest neighborhood of tiny homes around here?
Well, there really isn't, and I'm trying to get the first one going in the whole Greater Grand Rapids area. There's some other guys, you probably heard Eastbrook Builders, Mick McGra, there's other guys that are thinking about it. But in that area, in the Grand Rapids, no greater area of Grand Rapids, they won't accept it right this point. It's like you guys are thinking about it, trying to maybe get something going that's more affordable to people, so.
I mean, I can say, being a divorce lawyer, I know a lot of people that get divorced, you know, kind of middle age, later in life and they're looking for something smaller, it's like, God, I don't need to go buy a, or, you know, an expensive home, but they wanna have somewhere they can buy it.
Well, my feeling is like, uh, you get your people that go to Florida like myself for six months and then they wanna downsize that home that they've got now and buy a smaller lot with a smaller house, they don't have the overhead that way. Plus, the, the market, back a year ago, people were selling houses and getting a two-hundred thousand dollar house or getting a hundred and some thousand dollars equity out of it. And if they had to pay it off, they're, I mean, they'd cash for something like this.
On your diagram, it has exception there, it has two-hundred-and-fifteen feet deep and three-hundred-and-thirty-seven feet. What is that exception?
That's a home, that's a home right on the corner there, yeah, yeah. That's a mobile home, by the way, that's on the corner there.
Oh, it's already there?
Yeah, it's been existing for years, probably, to these thirty years. We've owned the property for, gosh, I'm gonna say twenty years anyway. Yeah. But then what I would like to do, um, and I'll just read this to you. If a variance is required, which it probably would be, you would like to apply for all three requested requirements in one variance hearing instead of multiple variance hearings. So, for that set, I would like to do it all at one time, save time, uh, and have everything approved sometime early spring or even this fall, if we can push it through. And then if things work out, I'd like to go in and start, like I say, a tiny home now. I mean, I'm allowed two splits right now, or I'm allowed three splits, two smaller sites and then the larger parcel. So, however breaks down.
I do have, I just got maintenance around here for mowing lawns and that, is that gonna be up to each landowner or building owner? No, is there gonna be like, what do they call it, H O A?
I was just gonna ask, is there gonna be a homeowners association as your plan?
Yeah, that's kinda what I'm thinking, yeah.
They gotta have something to kinda collectively pay for the plowing and whatnot, if it's gonna be.
Yeah, the snow plowing, the landscaping, the, the entrance detail, uh, keeping the property up, we appoint somebody within the subdivision that could take over that. I mean, we, we try to get like the first one or two owners in there that buy to say, hey, we'll, we'll take care of it, we start it up and then we would pay the people, obviously, something to, to keep the thing going. And then they would set up their own association, uh, for that, for the project.
Yep, that makes sense.
But the roads would be county spec. It's basically a true track, we put that in, I don't know how many years ago, probably twenty years ago, so, that's gotta be greatly approved, so, yeah.
Who'd you say is the number one group of people that are looking for something like this?
Well, I think your entry level, uh, your younger couples that just get married, wanna have a kid, or just single people would be perfect for them. And then again, the people, the retired people that are downsizing and they wanna come in, like I say, and have a lot less overhead and they do need to do a tiny home for themselves or they can, they even, for Florida, 'cause I myself, I have a place here and I have a place in Cape Cod, I go there for three months and then I go to Florida for six, so I think you're gonna have a lot of those people, is what I'm thinking. And there's a real need for it, there's a real, a real demand for this type of situation here, for these homes and stuff.
Is there any buffer here between, on the west line?
Yeah, it's all tree buffer.
Between there and the farm field?
Yeah, with the farm, what I'm gonna do is, I wanna plant some trees, I wanna build a berm with some of the soils out of the pond and I wanna build a berm on that west side and then take a lot of the pine trees and Russian olives and make kind of a buffer there between the main farm and, and then our development. For dust and things like that, I think, I mean, you guys are only in there once a year and probably twice a year in the spring and then also off, so.
Weekly, depending on the crop.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
So it can be weekly depending on the crop.
Depends on the crop.
Yeah.
Irrigation.
Irrigation. Right. But I think it'd be a, a great little development, it'd be a start for a tiny home project that would really benefit us and then if it goes well, I'll, I'll continue the tiny home developments. It's a real trend, I think, but there's nothing out there, is the problem. But I mean, if I get a somewhat of an approval or at least feel good about the development where you guys say, hey, yeah, I think we'd like to do this, I would get engineers on it and do a drawing such as what I got here and have it all engineered and go in there and do all my state roads, state key, and get my lots all surveyed and get everything approved and come back in. That's what I'd like to do.
This isn't really a question for, for Randy, but is it a problem, we just like something that's commercial or something? So we'd have part of variance or something?
Part of it is.
Part of it, yeah, commercial, uh, six hundred feet, I think those.
Yeah.
On commercial, you, on that part, you can put a, a well and it would have to come through this, the planning commission has a special use.
Okay.
So, it is allowed by Arizona, we'll get you guys to approve it.
Okay, I was just curious on that. Okay, can I, is it possible that I could put two units in there prior to a variance or prior to rezoning or however you guys want us to do it?
On the commercial property?
On a commercial property, am I allowed? Let's say if I get the road shaped up now, back to where the two houses would be and then go in and build a tiny home?
If you had two different lots, you can't put two houses on one lot?
No, I know, I just put tiny, one home and then another home and that would be.
That would be up to the planning commission, what they decide, they say yes for the one or they might say yes for both of them. I have a reason not to, I don't know, you know, and then we have to change our, our sizes.
Which, you know, the whole size requirement. For a commercial and, yeah, size requirement, which has been brought up, we have to.
And then too, you speak of phases, I'd like to do this in like two or three phases. Let's say you got ten homes in each phase, but two to start, two mile of homes, in other words, to start and maybe sell one other mile of homes and then just keep moving ahead, is what I kinda like to do.
Okay. Any other questions, guys?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Jake, you look like you're thinking.
Smoke's coming out of his ears.
I'll tell you what, Neil, it's up for you to get that secondary drive off Fitzner.
You know, it's possible, I haven't, every time I've been over there, I haven't been able to reach out to these people, you know, I'd like to meet the people and try to say what I'm trying to do, but I, but there is area, there is an area there, it drops off, but there is a, there is enough land there that I can get a driveway in, you know, I'd like to.
Is it driveway or a private road?
Well, a private road, I'm saying. Well, a private road, I'm sure.
So, you do have at least six, six feet.
Yeah. See, I didn't show it on this first drawing. You know, I've been so super busy with everything and I had a lot of health issues, so I haven't been able to really define it and then get with these folks, but I have stopped over there a few times and like I said, they never been home. Um, but I'd like to, I'd like to acquire a little bit of land right there. I think that'd be a benefit.
Gilbert's and Tiffany's, is that who it is?
At the top.
I was gonna say, or, I mean, that'd really be the move, is Johnson has all that room, but I guess that's for you to talk to.
Yeah, I left a message for him. I just left a little written message for him, but I didn't get a call back on it, so. But I think that would really benefit me on that. I don't know if I can get the, the number of the people, get a name and number from, from you guys for the, for being able to do that.
I don't know their numbers, I just know they're from around town.
I don't think the planning commission should give numbers out. That's something you have to locate yourself.
Okay, yeah, alright, I'll be doing that. I just looked it up on the flat map online, so.
Any other questions, guys? Okay, thank you, Randy. Okay, thanks for taking us out. Okay, moving on to our short-term rental ordinance. Need you guys a better copy. Accomplished last meeting, the, the changes Jake added, um, the changes, so. I think we should go through what we've done and make sure, make sure that's correct. I can, I can read this if you guys, something that we should have changed, didn't get changed, you guys can let me know. Township board finds that the short-term rental of a single-family dwelling in the Cato Township does not matter closely connected with public health, safety, and welfare of the community. The township board is in active discordance in an attempt to strike an appropriate balance between the interests of community residents, community business owners, visitors to the community, and real property owners wishing to engage in short-term rental or single-family dwellers of visitors to the community who rent single-family dwellings on a short-term basis, bring many benefits to the community. They can simultaneously create concerns surrounding issues of traffic, parking, congestion, litter, noise, and other similar issues. Meanwhile, issues related to fire safety and life safety codes must be considered in order to maximize the safety and well-being of all in the community. This ordinance is intended to strike a balance between competing interests. Sound good to everybody? Section two, definition, short-term rental, the rental or subletting of a single-family dwelling for compensation for not more than twenty-seven nights. However, the rental of the following shall not be considered short-term rental, bed, breakfast, establishments, hotels, resorts, campgrounds, transitional houses operated by a charitable organization. Group homes such as nursing homes and adult foster care homes, substance abuse rehabilitation clinics, mental health facilities, other similar healthcare-related facilities. Everybody hear that? Uh, add chapter two definitions, single-family dwelling owner, a person holding legal or equitable title to a single-family dwelling. An owner may designate an agent to perform duties or receive notice. Rent or rental, the permission, provision, or offering of a possession or occupancy of a single-family dwelling with some type of uh, remuneration paid to the owner for a period of time to a person who is not the owner pursuant to written or verbal agreement. Everything look good with that? Section three, registration, registration, A, registration required, annual registration required. All short-term rentals must be registered with the township. No single-family dwelling may be used as or advertised for a short-term rental unless registered in accordance with this ordinance. B, application to register a short-term rental, the owner shall satisfy the following requirements. Number one, the owner shall provide and certify as true the following on a form provided by the township. A, name, address, telephone number of the owner of the single-family dwelling to be used as a short-term rental. B, other information as the township board deems appropriate. Number two, an owner who wishes to brand or advertise a single-family dwelling as a short-term rental must register the single-family dwelling for each calendar year during which the rental or advertisement shall occur. The owner shall pay an annual administrative fee, the amount of which shall be established by motion or resolution of the township board. Any owner who rents or advertises a single-family dwelling as a short-term rental after the effective date of this ordinance. Without, without having registered, it pursuant to this ordinance shall pay an increased fee. The amount of which is also to be set by motion or resolution of the township board. Everything look good there? B, short-term rental regulations. Single-family dwellings used as short-term rentals are subject to the following requirements and forms of standards. Street address posted within the single-family dwelling, the street address of the property shall be posted in at least two prominent locations within the single-family dwelling in order to assist occupants in directing emergency service personnel in the event of an emergency. The address should be posted near the kitchen and near any telephone or pool. Maximum occupancy, beginning the effective date of this ordinance, the maximum occupancy of a single-family dwelling used as a short-term rental shall be as follows. Maximum occupancy in a single-family dwelling used as short-term rental shall not exceed the applicable egress requirements for occupancy in Michigan Construction Code. Subject to any other local, state, or federal requirements. Or two, in addition to the maximum occupancy specified in subsection one above a single-family dwelling used as short-term rental, have a total of, total number of people on site, including occupants, daytime guests, allowed to be present at most, at most from sunrise to sunset, up to one point five times the maximum number of occupants allowed by the subsection one. A fractional number of people allowed shall be rounded up to the nearest whole number. Good so far? Smoke detectors and carbon monoxide devices, single-family dwellings used as short-term rentals, uh, must possess. Operational smoke detectors in each bedroom, which must be tested at least every ninety days to ensure they are properly functioning and.
No, no, I think it goes with.
Probably leave it to you.
First and then list these off.
Oh, I think it was.
Unless it was an smoke detector, somehow that got mixed up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you mean.
I think that C was supposed to start out with single-family dwelling and then, was smoke detectors after A and J, is that what it's supposed to be?
No, it starts out at, on C, a smoke detector, the carbon monoxide devices. Single-family dwellings used as short-term rentals must possess, but we can switch it any.
Yeah.
That's just how it was.
Little bit A and G, take them out?
Yeah, you just stopped it, you'll, I don't think so. I think it's a continuation into number two, so.
That's all I wrote.
They're properly functioning and.
And at least, but it goes on the carbon monoxide, so.
And at least one operational and approved carbon monoxide device of the type described in M C L one two five dot one five zero four on each floor, which must be tested at least every ninety days to ensure proper functioning.
So, do you think we should just get rid of the smoke detector and carbon monoxide devices? Just do a single-family dwelling used as a short-term rental must possess. The operation, then they go into one.
Then you're gonna do that carbon monoxide detector in the second part. If you're gonna, I mean, the first part, you gotta add carbon monoxide devices, you have PJ.
It does in the, in number two.
Okay.
So, if you go to A, C.
So, eliminate that part of C, uh.
Yep, and then that's split between one and two under C.
Oh, I see.
One is smoke detectors, two is carbon monoxide. That's, maybe it all just needs to be combined, I guess.
To me, it was all.
Yeah, sorry, no, when I tried to switch it before, man, it's.
Yeah, I made some changes, I guess I missed that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, ready to move on?
Yeah.
D, insurance, single-family dwellings used as short-term rentals must be insured by a comprehensive rental dwelling insurance policy with coverage of at least uh, one million. Owner shall provide to the township confirmation of the existence of the insurance each time the short-term rental is registered with the township. Now, E, notice of township rules and policies, renters of single-family dwellings used as short-term rentals must be provided copies of or information regarding the following, information on how to access the zoning, township zoning ordinances. Information regarding trash receptacle pickup, uh, property boundaries on site, parking, limitations on daytime visitors per subsection. Uh, B two, above and common areas which are available for the renters' use, and water safety information.
So, we're gonna throw the B where they? Well, we're gonna be in two together, so.
And so, so if you go back to the previous page, saying B, two. So, in addition to maximum occupancies specified in subsection one above, single-family dwelling, so it's just for spring, back to that.
Alright. Okay, yeah. Uh, notice of emergency numbers and addresses, the street address and phone number of the nearest hospital must be made available in short-term rental in an easily accessible location. Owner must notify renters upon or prior to the arrival of location of this information. Adequate, adequate trash receptacles, uh, single-family dwellings used as short-term rentals must have a minimum of one large container of at least ninety gallons. Reflective address signs, the owner must post a reflective address sign on or near the mailbox of a short-term rental. Uh, the sign must meet all the following requirements, the street number must be in reflective, uh, white numbers, at least three inches in height and visible. The sign must be mounted to a post or mailbox, the sign must be plainly visible from either direction of approach to the driveway. Sign must be adjacent to the driveway and surfaces. That is where we left off. So.
Joe, is there any way I can make a copy of those last couple pages? I didn't bring mine tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
You copied this or the?
No, I mean, the old one from last week. Yeah, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, sorry. No, I just had to make one, the timing, I'm a double, uh.
Oh, okay.
Double side.
Okay, we're ready. You have a, copy of the old one? You have copy? Okay, looks like we left off, um, um, C, violations, relocation of regist- of registration. I'll go ahead and start reading it. Violations as a municipal civil infractions, any violations of the provision of the ordinance shall be a municipal civil infraction. Each day that a violation continues constitutes a separate violation, uh, notwithstanding any other township ordinance. Violations of this ordinance are subject to the following fines. Okay, ground list. Okay. Does that sound good to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Short-term rental of the unregistered dwellings, unregistered short-term rentals will receive one notice of non-compliance with a thirty-day grace period to become registered pursuant to this ordinance. With failure to become registered upon expiration of the thirty-day grace period, the unregistered short-term rental will be fined two hundred and fifty dollars per day. What do we think of that?
I mean, it seems fair to me, thirty days is, because they really just venture a day, don't they, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so, I think that's plenty of time.
Thirty days would be plenty of time, though?
Yeah.
Fix an issue.
Dave, I couldn't find my emails.
Yeah, that's where our copy.
Oh, okay. For eight times, just calling my phone, but. It's the six-page one.
Re-share. Okay, maximum occupancy, the fine for exceeding the max- maximum occupancy permitted for a short-term rental is five hundred for a first offense and fifteen hundred for each, uh, subsequent offense.
Sometimes they just write these like that, though, they just, I mean, I don't know why, but. Yeah.
I don't see, probably, I mean, you bet on the first time, if you're gonna keep going back, you gotta make it strong enough, though.
Yeah.
I mean, and probably one of the biggest complaints of anyone next to one of these is, yeah, there was thirty people, you know, right, yeah, so.
So, we keep that.
I mean, I guess, like, my only thing would be is, I, maybe this makes it too complicated, but I'm sure there's instances where you write to someone and obviously without your knowledge, you, like, they show up and have too many, so. I don't know how harsh we wanna be or not, but I'm, I'm sure it's more a matter of we're trying to incentivize enforcement of their own, of their own policies. I as- I assume someone that gets, that does this and gets the landlord in trouble probably gets banned from the platform or gets some warning themselves, yeah.
As I said before, they wouldn't get, they don't want people better, yeah.
Right, so hopefully incentivized all the way down. Right, so hopefully incentivized all the way down, so, okay.
Okay, revocation of registration, offenses warranting revocation.
Oh, did we read three, Joe?
Yeah, that's the one we just.
That was three, okay, sorry, it's good.
Township may revoke the rental registration.
I got these.
I think, yeah.
I'm sorry, did I, did I find?
Okay.
It should say, it's page five, isn't it?
Yep, I got it.
Not a good circuiture.
For any, uh, single-family dwelling used as a short-term rental which is the site of at least three separate incidents. Occurring, um, three separate days within a calendar year resulting in a plea of responsibility with or without an explanation. A plea of guilty, a plea of no contest or a court's determination of responsibility or guilt by the owner. Or any renter for a violation of one or more of the following. Any provision of the ordinance, any provision of any township ordinance, including its anti-noise ordinance. Zoning ordinance and any other township ordinance. Uh, section of the zoning ordinance or permit or approval process. Or any violation of any, of any other local state or federal law or regulation.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little wordy, but the way I'm reading it is that it just would require. Three separate findings of a court. Of response, I mean, so that's pretty serious if you've somehow been written three tickets by day but got found guilty three times in a year, so. That's how I'm reading this, which seems reasonable.
Good with that, do you wanna try to shorten it up or?
No, I, I don't think there's a way to make it less wordy, it just took me a second to figure out what I'm saying, but I think it makes sense what it is.
Okay, moving on to number two, uh, revocation, uh, procedure. Upon a determination by the zoning administrator that, uh, short-term rental registration is subject to revocation. The zoning administrator shall issue a notice to the owner that the township intends to revoke the rental registration. The notice shall inform the owner of their right to a hearing to show cause as to why the registration should not be revoked. If a hearing is requested within fourteen days of the service of the notice. If a hearing is timely requested, the township shall schedule the hearing. Before the township board and notify the owner in writing of a time and place for that hearing. At the, at the hearing, the owner may present evidence that the requirements for revocation provided in subsection, uh, B one are not satisfied. Or that the owners, uh, should not be held responsible for one or more of the three requisite violations due to, uh, extenuating circumstances. Extenuating circumstances may include circumstances such as the violation was committed by a non-renter and the renters attempted to prevent or halt the violation. The violation resulted from an act of God or other circumstances that the owner could not reasonably anticipate. And prevent or could not reasonably control. A lot there.
I think it's pretty good, actually, the one thing we need is we need to specify how they, um, request the hearing, whether that's in writing submitted to Dave. Or a phone call to Dave or whatever it is, but we do need to specify how they, you don't want some situation where they say, oh, I called them up, David was mail. Like, I would, I would say in writing. I'd even say in writing and either delivered to the township or mailed to the township or something like that.
Let go.
We could just add it at the end, probably, I mean, or you can try to, yeah, just in the middle.
I'd, I'd say put it at the end.
That way we don't have to, yeah. So basically just some sentence like. Um, all hearing requests must be in writing. And mailed to the township. Within fourteen days of the service of the notice.
Okay, got that written down, big? Uh, revocation period and effect, upon revocation of registration, a dwelling cannot be re-registered. As a short-term rental for a period of one year and cannot be used for short-term rentals until re-registered. Good with that?
Sounds fine.
In addition to the remedies provided, uh, for in this ordinance, the township may also. Or in the alternative, seek injunctive relief for, uh, abatement of the violation in a court of competent jurisdiction.
Sounds good.
D, review after implementation, uh.
This is really just, I think, at the end.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is.
Kinda ordering how to.
Yeah, that's pretty much, yeah.
Like, the next one is amendment effective Dave, so, yeah.
Okay. Make too many changes there. Starting violations.
I guess the only change we made was the request in writing, right?
Yeah, um. Clean up some of this stuff on page four and then.
Yeah.
Adding that sentence to, to the, to the revocation procedure. Anything else you guys think should be added to this or discussed or?
We gotta figure out the fee.
I think we just said the township decides it, right?
Yeah.
I, I think we said by their motion or something.
See the, see, Sydney got two hundred dollars.
But we didn't do the inspection like Sydney did, right?
I don't remember.
We took out, we, we didn't do a lot of this, so Sydney did, yeah, they had the most, they had a really intensive one.
Yeah, they had quite a lot of time to.
Right, and we just left all that to, uh, the local, local laws.
I like part of that too, like talking to some owners, like they have their own, have their own rules, like.
Oh, for sure, yeah, cause they don't wanna get in trouble, so. Well, and I think, like we said last time, some of the stuff Sydney had, it was like ten P M, it's like, well. If it's July, your bonfire's going over ten P M. Yeah, right, so. Seems a little excessive.
Yes.
All the neighbors can have a bonfire, but not you.
Okay, so.
I think I'm good.
That concludes that, um. Next. You know, an application. Form, I've got a couple of things here. This is. Sydney. Application form.
Yes, and so you follow so much of the others, I wonder what that looks like. Oh, you're depressed, Dave.
Maybe I don't. We wanna get into this and see if we can knock this out too. You guys think?
Uh, it's seven o'clock right now, I'm fine, it's up to you guys. I like velvet ears a lot more. Cause it's way less complicated.
Yes, he's way less complicated.
Which is kind of remodeled after velvet ears.
We're mirroring there, we're.
Let me see, please.
Yeah, I, okay, with the.
Yeah, Dave likes it, um. That works, how you like it, Dave, you like how it is?
Yeah.
We have a velvet ear.
He's velvet ear too. You do velvet ear, right?
Driver license, Dave, that stuff like usually, telephone number, email address.
Looks like Patriots got copy the insurance request, so.
Yep.
There's that checklist, yeah.
Looks like their application fee is fifty.
We change, uh, I think it's up four, yeah.
Yeah, like you change that. Yeah, right.
I see for velvet ear, they don't have a checklist. Reason may, they, uh, felt. That, that would put liability on the township instead of a property owner. There was one who started to do it and I, uh, red flagged it because of, uh. Something minor, the, uh. Oh, they, they said you had to have an address on the building and on the mailbox. And, uh, you know, the people thought of this just too much, but anyway, they made it where. I don't do any inspections on that, cause that way it keeps the township, uh, like the fire started. I did inspect it and the fire extinguisher was good when I looked at it and then it's not and somebody gets, you know. Hurt, it's, uh, I don't know if the township would be responsible, that's how they kind of view it, but.
But I like the logic that it totally removes us from, cause frankly, it's, it, it's not our responsibility for other houses to be checking on that. And if there was a hotel here, you wouldn't be checking on the hotel to make sure that it had that, so.
Like, if the owner of the house is, like, is making enough money there, you're gonna wanna make sure that it's.
Yeah.
You would think, yeah.
And some of these Sydney questions, if any extension cords are in use, are they used in a compliant manner? I couldn't answer that about my own house or that, like, I hope so. Yes. So, yeah, if Dave likes velvet ears, then I like velvet ears. Right, yeah, exactly. Have they, how have they felt about the fifty-dollar fee? I guess the board's gonna decide that, I'm just curious.
Um, there hasn't any, been any complaints with the people.
Right.
That's a year, that's a yearly, right?
Yeah.
It's been two, two weeks so far.
That seems.
Fifty seems cheap.
Yeah, per year.
Right, yeah, I think that's.
So we wanna keep it, we wanna keep this the way it is? And no changes?
At glance, I don't. I, I mean, the only thing I'd say, I'll ask for Dave's comment on this, I, I personally don't know why we need the legal description of the property, that's just your description on your tax bill, which seems irrelevant to a short-term rental. But if they haven't had a problem giving it to you, then I guess it's fine, it just, again, it seems unnecessary, but. Parcel number, it seemed to.
April trial.
Yeah.
You know.
Are you, would you check it in and there's a lot there to?
I would like, I mean, I, the only reason I ask is, again, if you write parcel number, it accomplishes the same thing, I could type that on a stamp and I'd know where you are and. Well, right, I mean, I can tell you, uh, most of those, it's either gonna be a lot number or they're gonna have to attach their tax bill, cause it's gonna be, you know, that long, yeah.
I see any kind of permits for these other townships, they all go by, well, I don't know for sure if they all go by the, uh, when they file it, they file it with the tax ID number. I don't, with my own personal files, I use, uh, the address, but.
That would be my only suggested change to this, is I don't see what use the legal description gives a parcel number and address number more than perfectly identifies it. See here, it's like, address, parcel number, well, you can find whatever it is. I mean, again, it, it's not a big deal, it just, if you're trying to clean it up. That'd be my only thought, but it's not hurting anything either.
What do you guys think?
If it are.
Just clean that part up.
Right, yeah.
I don't, I don't think they'll, I don't think long to.
The legal description is literally not gonna help anyone look it up. But if you know the parcel number, anyone can type it in, so. Okay. Oh, still keep the parcel number though, right, is what we're gonna do, just take off the legal description. Yeah, that way we'll have address and parcel number. Right? Okay.
Okay.
Did we knock that out? Took three minutes, so.
I just gotta ask the board if we.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if we made that before we did a public hearing, so then, you know, you can, you can have the amount, you know, the fee.
Oh.
Before we have a public hearing on that, then we know.
Just write it right out.
You know, if it's fifty dollars, a hundred, that'll figure out then it's on there. Then if anybody asks from the crowd, we know.
Somebody'll ask.
Yeah. It's about how it always goes.
Yeah.
So, work is done. We have an application form, we are set, we can set a public hearing date.
Are we gonna wait for the board to tell us the?
I don't even wanna wait for that.
Well, we got those others, small things, like residential, true. I don't wanna put all, I don't wanna put all that.
On one.
On one, that's what I was saying.
Okay, we can do that. Okay. Good job, guys.
Cool.
Alright. New new business. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to our final public comment. Three minutes for first.
I'd like to say something, kinda, name's Darryl Johnson, um. I'm the adjacent property owner to, uh, Randy Mow there and, or well, the property he's proposing. And I have a lot of concerns about the scope on what he's trying to do out there. Um, you know, just the twenty-eight or twenty-six, twenty-eight units of what he's proposing out there. Um, the operating systems, wells, septics, what's that gonna do to surrounding properties? You know, our community's getting chopped up enough as it is. I know, um, previously they had, uh, M dot had issues with their entrance coming in on forty-six. Um, this, there was too much for what they had proposed earlier out there, there was not enough, um. Right away or whatever for one road, they said they had to have two roads. Obviously, he doesn't have two roads coming into that right now. Just, uh, that's a lot of houses and a lot of people, um. Small houses like that also, you know, obviously people have more stuff than what's gonna fit in that house, what's that gonna look like out there? You know, they, um, I didn't hear him say anything about having storage buildings for, you know. People are gonna have more stuff that's gonna fit in a five-hundred square foot house. Just, just a lot of concerns about, um, you know, what that's gonna do to the area, it's kind of a, a rural area and I hate to see. You know, obviously, land's getting developed around here, but that's a lot to put on a small area. I know the, what he's talking about building a lake out there, that's a swamp. It's, um, and I don't even know if the DEQ would let him dig it out. So, I know it's all, it's like a muck swamp out there, so, you know, that in itself presents. So, I know it's all, it's like a muck swamp out there, so, you know, that in itself presents some other problems, so. Just, I guess, be diligent in your thoughts and doing this, and hopefully, we can preserve some of our rural community, so.
Thank you, Darryl.
Anyone else? I have, um, Frank Costa, I was here a couple months ago, I just wanna say thank you guys for, um, just what, the work that has been done on the ordinance for the short-term rentals specifically, um, I know a lot of thought has went into it, and I also just appreciate it because I, I think it creates a lot of clarity for the community, it creates a lot of clarity for guests, for neighbors, for homeowners, so, um, I just really appreciate that. And, I don't know if it's possible to make a recommendation, the, the one thing I didn't hear that I would recommend possibly adding is, um, maybe a fire extinguisher, I know there was carbon dioxide and smoke detectors, but I think a fire extinguisher should at least be a minimum in each short-term rental that the guests have visible, not tucked away under, um, in a drawer where they don't know where it's at, but actually, like, mounted on the wall or something like that, just for safety. But, um, the other quick question I have, if it's okay to just ask a couple questions, are, did I hear that there, there wouldn't be an inspection associated with getting a permit, or there would be, if, uh, there was some, maybe some that.
Or not be, right?
Yeah, we're talking about not.
Okay, but, and part of the application, we would say that we're doing X, Y, Z, and that, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, it seems like, well, there'd be, there'd be two fees, there'd be a permit fee and then an application fee to, to be determined, uh, by the board, but there would be two fees annually?
I was thinking one, but I don't know what you guys.
I thought we kinda meant like one initial fee, and then there's an annual fee.
One initial fee, then a, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how I read it.
Perfect, okay, all right, and then as far as next steps, just to help me understand that a little bit better, sounds like there's a public hearing, where the board would pass that, and there's a public hearing, or how does that?
So, we would hold the public hearing, and we'd get the final draft, hold the public hearing, and then, uh.
Approve it.
We approve it first.
And then, it would be sent to the board, uh, for their approval.
Okay.
They're able to make changes at that point.
And they can make cha- yeah, they can make changes at that point, too.
Okay, sweet, and then, I guess the last question would be, is it, um, for annual, is it based on when the permit was issued, or is it January one renewal? Just trying to understand that, because I, as an owner, I would wanna make sure I'm in compliance, and that just helps me, you know, make sure I know when.
I would think it'd be better to just standardize it, like. Keep track of who didn't want when, because if you start out with two, and, okay, so this one starts with A, and this one starts with L, right, and then you get a hundred.
Yeah. Did they do it that way in Belvedere, Dave, or what do you do?
Uh, just, uh, yearly.
Yeah, but when?
But is it once a year for everyone, or is it once a year?
Yeah, well, no, now, what they have on theirs, not the, I don't know about the initial, um, permit, but they, uh, whenever the person wants to, uh, turn in the application, they pay the fee then.
By that, it's one year from now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then after that, it's, uh, once a year, yeah.
What is it, once a year, like, when we all apply for our license plates, we all go by our birthday?
Yeah.
Do you do it, you see what I'm, so is it once a year for, or is it, everybody does it on January first or something?
No, it's different.
It is, but, okay, it is different for everybody.
Okay, I'm gonna start it, so you.
I mean, you're gonna be the one processing all these, what do you like more, would you rather have?
I'd rather it be one year, once, same day.
Like, January first, you're, yeah.
Yeah.
Make it simpler.
Okay.
So, the question, just a follow-up question to that, though, is, i- if someone applies in, like, September, would they have to wait until January one, or would they have a prorated? You, you know what I mean, just, just trying to.
Prorated.
Understand.
Prorated.
Say, hear that, or you could say, you know.
January to June is one, is the full fee, the other one would be at the, I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, you're thinking Jordan, I don't know what.
Well, I was thinking you could either do that, or you could just kinda say, and maybe this is too confusing, so it's probably a dumb idea, but I already thought it, so I'll say it, which is that, yeah, that if you, you know, say you apply after June one, you don't have to apply for year half or something, but then that just kind of alleviates the concern that, I don't know, whatever's less confusing for you would be what I would want, so.
I'm not asking what you mean, but.
But, um, yeah, that's all.
Trying to get to January first, if you did have, uh, you know, say it's, say it's a hundred dollar, January first, if you come in June second, like, you shouldn't have to. Then you, you could do fifty dollars, and then come January, you're gonna start out with a hundred again.
Yeah.
Then everybody's in January.
I'd take that for you.
Can you say that again?
All right, so, you're, if they come in January, if anybody's new, if they come in January first, they gotta pay a hundred, they come in June second, then they could pay fifty dollars, and then come following January, then they'd be having a hundred, because they would be on board with their vales as previous.
I mean, either that, or you can just make it real simple and say, hey, sorry if you're foolish enough to apply on December tenth, you're gonna be paying again in twenty-one days. I mean, I'm just saying, that would be the simplest way of doing it, because I think, like, God, I bought a Jeep a couple years ago, you know, August fifteenth, wow, birthday September sixth, that was pretty smart, you know, I'm just saying, like. So.
Well, I just wanna say again, thank you guys for all the attention.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Those are, those are good questions. Anyone else? Go ahead and close public comment. Our next regular meeting is September tenth. And we're gonna make a motion to Jordan.
I'll vote him.
Okay, motion made by Jordan, is there a second?
I'll second. Give it to Jake.
Jake.
And, um.
Seconded by Jake, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Five.
Opposed, motion carried.